7:30. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that it is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6 at sec of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Didich.
Here.
Councilman DePiero.
Here.
Mr. Mealy.
Here.
Mr. Math.
Present.
Mr. Napolitano.
Here.
Ms. Veely.
Here.
Mr. Von Aiken.
Here.
Chairman Dinsmore.
Here.
We also have with us our board planner, Mr. Weiser, our board engineer, Mr. Kanji Anau, and our board attorney, Mr. Ladonna.
Very good. Let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for religious standing, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. That's right. This meeting of the Township of Precipiny Troy Hills Planning Board, Monday, March 7th, 2022, it is 7:30 PM. If we could also note that this meeting is open to the general public. Is there anyone here who has something they wish to bring to this board that is not on our agenda tonight? Hearing and seeing none, we'll move on to the resolutions. We have the resolution for application number 21:517 on X Equities to Hilton Court, Block 202, Lot 310, preliminary and final major site plan, and a major soil moving permit to construct a warehouse facility. Do I have a motion for that resolution?
Mr. Chairman. I move the motion to approve application number 21:517 on X Equities to Hilton Court, Block 202, Lot 3.10, preliminary and final major site plan, major soil moving permit to construct a warehouse facility.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Napolitano. Nora, would you call the roll, please?
DePiero.
Yes.
Math.
Yes.
Napolitano.
Yes.
Veely.
Yes.
Dinsmore.
Yes.
The water department said to give a report. Not all I'm saying, though. Mr. Willock, the water department.
Okay. Actually, isn't that the Eileen Court?
Is it?
Yeah. It's the Eileen Court application for a monopole. Yep.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I didn't realize that.
Yep. Okay. We actually have a second resolution at this point.
That resolution is, this applicant asked if we would be able to adopt it this same evening that we're hearing it, so.
Right.
So we don't want to give the application.
Okay. That's true. Very good. So let's go through the list. We've got application number 22:501, Township of Precipiny, 70, 6070, Eileen Court, Block 498, Lot 23, courtesy review.
I'm John Wewerka, Water Superintendent for the Township of Precipiny.
Sir, before you provide a testimony, I'm going to swear you're in. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name again and your position.
My name is John Wewerka, I'm the Water Superintendent for the Town of Precipiny.
Can you spell your last name again?
Thank you, sir. I'm here tonight to talk about our Bell Road tank painting project, also known as the Eileen Court tank. It is at the dead end of Eileen Court. It's a half a million gallon tank. It needs to be painted, needs to be painted inside and out. On this tank, we have two cell carriers, AT&amp;T and Verizon. In order for us to paint the structure, we need to get them off the tank and onto a temporary monopole, which would be located directly adjacent to the tank. The carriers need to get their equipment onto the monopole, make improvements to the tank structure itself before we paint it. They have to put up their future supports. Once they do that, we're free to paint the tank. Just to give you an idea of the operation that we need to achieve. The monopole is temporary. It's 100 foot tall. We need to begin this work as soon as the weather permits, and we're almost there. There's a lot that has to be done that's going to take a couple of weeks with the carriers just transferring their equipment off our tank, on building the monopole, getting on the monopole, tearing down their equipment that's on the tank. We need to paint this tank in fair weather. We generally plan on painting between the months of August and November. That's our window of opportunity to get the job done. We can't take the tank out of service during the hot summer months. We need the water. For obvious reasons, we can't take it out of service in the colder months, just because the coatings will not adhere to the structure itself. I think the planner or the engineer did ask about testimony about the site operations. Obviously, we're going to be moving a large monopole in. That will be erected adjacent, immediately adjacent to our structure. And if you need to, how the structure will be erected, I do have our general contractor here, Eric Schimmel, who can give information if you guys are interested in the how it goes up part of this. But it goes up relatively quick. It is ballast mounted, meaning it's got large concrete blocks that hold it down and keep it from falling over. It's mounted on the surface of the gravel parking lot that's already there. So they're going to have their operation with their folks directing this tower, transferring their equipment, and then we come in at the end once they're all off our tank and we do our paint operation, which is completely different from what they're doing. This will be occurring during working hours, Monday through Friday, and the hours generally are between 7:30 and 5:00 PM. And their vehicle traffic is unpredictable because the parking lot there is shared by both us and the Little League facility. We will try to minimize our impact to them. We will try to keep to the far side with our tank painting activities. The monopole does have to go adjacent to their structures that are already there. It will not take up any additional parking. It will block a temporary access road that does have a loop, so they still can access the fields with a vehicle if they have to. It's just not going to loop around like it does now. We did this back, I believe the year was 2006, somewhere in that timeframe. We've done this before. This is one of two others that will be coming before you with a very similar requirement, where we have to get cell carriers off on a temporary structure, paint our tanks, and let them go back and remove the temporary structure.
Question?
Could you have?
How long will it take to construct the monopole? I'm just thinking about the, Little League season is about to open, too.
Okay. Eric, could you come up a second?
Perhaps, Mr. Chairman, before we get into the testimony about the construction of the monopole, if there's any board members who has any questions regarding the testimony already given. The basic operation.
Actually, one simple question. I'm assuming that once you've finished painting the tank, that they're going to take down the monopole and go back up on the tank.
That is correct. We will restore the site back to the way it was or better.
What is your estimated time of return to the tank?
Well, we hope to have our tank painting done by mid-November. That's our goal. From there to take down, Eric, you would have to give information on that.
If you guys finish in November.
Hang on one second, I was just going to swear you're in. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
Name for the record, please.
Eric Schimmel.
Spell your last.
S-C-H-I-M-M-E-L.
And your position?
Project Manager for Special Projects.
Would you please speak into the mic?
Project Manager for Special Projects.
And you're overseeing the construction of this monopole?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. And with regard to the discussion here before, the one thing I'm observing is in your material, the monopole will be completely within an already existing fence, right?
No, that's not correct. That fence will be a temporary fence placed around the monopole and removed when we're done.
Okay. Is any of this going on, the land leased to the Little League?
It's part of the parking lot immediately adjacent to the tank.
Have they been notified?
I have spoken to both Joe Plecha and one of the personnel, I forget the name, but we did speak in the fall and we did notify them that this project was forthcoming.
Okay. I mean, if most of the work is done in the summer and fall, then it's not going to be an issue because they don't use the fields that much.
Right. What's going to happen is the temporary monopole will have to go up as soon as possible. As soon as they can obtain their permits, I believe they're going to begin work immediately, putting the pole up. Once the pole's up, the space that it takes up is rather small.
Okay. I mean, I walk there a couple of times a week, so I know the loop, I know the parking lot, and I'm just, is that access loop going to be completely taken up by this monopole?
Yes, it will be.
With the temporary fence?
It will temporarily be taken up for the duration of this project.
Okay.
We have no other choice of where we can put this.
Fair enough. Fair enough.
Other members of the board?
I guess one question. So you plan to do the painting starting in August?
Yes.
Right. When would the monopole go up?
I would love to have it go up tomorrow if I could, but as soon as possible, as soon as permits can be obtained, because they have an awful lot of work to do in order for us to stay on schedule with our work.
So there's no way that it's going to be able to not interfere with baseball?
Got it.
All right.
Mr. Von Aiken, you had?
Well, I'm just a little concerned. It sounds like you had an informal conversation and notified the Little League. I think an appropriate step would be to provide some sort of formal letter to the Little League office so that they're properly informed.
We could do that.
Okay.
And Jim Walsh is aware of all the projects that are going on there, so they already know.
Okay.
I will send the letter out.
Other members of the board, have any questions of this?
I have one.
Yes.
Is this pole in one piece?
No.
Oh, comes in multiple pieces?
Yeah. Comes in multiple pieces. It'll come on three tractor trailers. We'll have a crane there the day it shows up. Prior to that, we'll prep the ground, we'll put in eight inches of stone where this will be set on, and then we'll come in with the tractor trailers, the crane, we'll put the base together, we'll put the ballast on top of the base, and then we'll stack the pole. That process, the stone will be first day, the process of putting the whole pole up with the crane and the tractor trailers coming in, that'll take one day, and then it'll probably take two or three weeks. We'll be there with a man lift, putting the carrier antennas and mounts and lines, running up the pole and getting everything tested, and then cutting them from the tank over to the temporary pole. Once that's complete, then we'll start taking all their assets off the tank, and then there's repair work that we have to do once that is done prior to the painting, so that all the welds will be painted with the coating system and not fail the coating system later on down the road.
And, sorry, one more. Is the safety of the children in Northdale School going to be affected by this at all? Crane losing a piece, rolling into the school building, out of recess, anything like that at all we'd worry about?
No, I'm pretty sure we're out of, we're going to be out of the fall range of anything but the school.
Well, you said the pole's going up as soon as possible. That could be during school hours, though, right?
Yes, but the fall range, the pole will be 100 feet. Kids, there's enough place for the kids to be around than 100 feet, and we will have...
I'm just thinking.
We will have...
That's up on a hill, though, that parking lot, and then Northdale is down the bottom of the hill, if I'm not mistaken, right? Okay.
Yeah.
So hoping nothing goes down the hill.
It's behind some trees and stuff like that, so I'm not so concerned. That area is subject, however, that right now they've been staging the road work that they've been doing. They've got a lot of heavy earth moving equipment in there and some backhoes and...
Up in the parking lot.
Up in the parking lot, yeah. I don't think it would interfere with your moving in because they're on the side closest to the school, the entrance to the parking lot, and there should be room to move in and do what you need to do, but...
It'll just be one day with the tractor trailers and the crane and the man lifts all in there at once, and then after that, we'll just do the man lift and our crews working. It'll be the one day that's major operation.
Okay.
Same thing on the other end. When we take it down, we'll come in back in with the same tractor trailer and crane and man lift to take the pole down. As far as to that, we'll be there with a man lift...
Would you please speak into the microphone?
At the end, we'll be there with a man lift at the end, sorry. We'll be there with a man lift at the end, again, to take the tower down, but prior to that, we'll have to install all the carriers' new equipment after the tank is painted.
Sure.
Which will take, it'll take a little while because we've got to take extra care not to damage the new coating system, then we'll get in trouble. It'll take a little while to get everything back on the tank, and then after that, they're up and running on the tank, then we'll come in and...
And this will be Monday through Friday, not Saturday and Sunday, which is the busiest days for the Little League?
No. We'll be there Monday to Friday, and over the weekend, we'll secure the site, so...
Okay, because that parking lot is very heavily used and the Little League is in and out, so just be aware.
Yeah. We'll make sure that the site's secure. Once the tower is up, we'll have a temporary fence around it, and we'll keep it secure.
Okay.
Any other questions by members of the board from our planner? Do you have any?
Just a couple of quick questions. So we own, the township owns the water tower and the land around it?
I believe it's the township property. It's all one big property.
Okay, so there would be no reason to get a separate owner sign consent?
No.
For use of the property?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
We have a right of way for where the water tank is, and I forget what the periphery is, maybe another 20 or 30 feet around the water tower is part of the right of way.
Okay. Bear with me a second. So you will be expanding the square footage of the site because you're expanding the fence line for this?
Yes, this will take up additional space. It'll take the footprint of the ballast foundation. We are not expanding the fence that's currently around the tank. That fence will remain in place after this tank is painted. It may have to temporarily come down during the painting operation, but it will be put back up. The fence that Mr. Schimmel is referring to is a temporary fence that will just surround the temporary monopole.
And that is gone roughly in the, what did I write down? By the end of the year?
Yes, yes. It'll be in cold weather when that starts coming down.
So at the end of the day, the site will look exactly the way it is now, albeit the water tank's going to have a fresh coat?
It's going to look like a nice shiny new tank out there.
It'll be blinded.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Andrew, do you have any?
No, they answered my questions in this testimony, so I'm good.
All right. Any other items that need to be... Do you have anything more you wish to say?
I just want to add aboard that we have several tanks that have cell carriers on them, and they will be coming forward. Probably next year, two more will be almost an identical type of operation, just in a different location. There are million gallon storage tanks that we desperately need painted. We do have to coordinate with multiple carriers, so it gets a little tricky when there's a lot of them involved. But we do have two more projects, very similar to this one.
Okay. Very good.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question here.
Yes, Mr. Didich.
And again, it may be just for my knowledge, but what is the risk of any contamination inside the tank due to the paint? Any chemical contamination?
Now, the tank is drained when we do this work. These paint coatings are all NSF certified coatings that are compatible with drinking water. There is no risk from the painting operation. The tank is completely dry. There's no water in it. We do valve it off from the system. Before we put it back in the system, we have to do a series of tests, including bacteriological testing, before we can put it back in service.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Counselor, you have a question?
I have one question. Are you aware of the height of the existing utilities from the carriers, current height?
I, no, I don't know the exact number. They're not on top of the tank. They are right at the pole level of the tank where the...
They're hanging off the side.
Okay. So the reason why I ask is that typically if they're a part of approval from either this board or some other board, that height is very specific. So I would just add that the measurements be taken prior to removal, so that way when they get back onto the tank, they're at that same height because this height has probably specified someplace.
They were courtesy reviews, so they were exempt from zoning.
Oh, okay.
So back in the day, they didn't apply to boards. They just got their zoning and building permits. It's something new that I do, that I bring applicants for courtesy reviews to the board. In the old days, this town property, we just did the work.
We just did it.
Yeah, just to note that.
Thank you.
The carriers' drawings that they have from the original, because they're very specific on their heights.
Right.
So they have to have the angles of deflection and everything adjusted according to the height. So on their drawings, they will have the rad center, which would be the center of the antenna, which they'll have now, which will be the exact same...
Speak into the microphone, please.
Which will be the exact same when we put them back on the tank.
So you'll have the measurements as they currently exist, and then you'll have the measurements when they go back up?
Yeah. They're drawings that exist now that show the elevation of the antennas right now, so they're going to go back in the exact same positions they are at now.
Thank you. Okay. Any further questions by members of the board, our professionals, any questions by members of the public on these matters, by these hearing and seeing none? Is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak either in favor or in opposition to this application at this time, hearing and seeing none? Do I hear somebody willing to make a motion on this, that we've received the courtesy review and that we feel that it complies with our zoning?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion. I guess I'll just need some clarification about whether this is an approval, obviously, because this is a courtesy review.
Right.
This is just an endorsement, shall we say?
A board finding.
Board finding?
That it's consistent with our zoning.
So I make a motion that, I'm sorry.
The only recommendation that I heard was that the Little League be formally noticed.
Yes.
If there's anything else. That was the only recommendation that I heard by the board. Other than that, it would be consistent with the master plan analysis.
Okay. So if I make the motion subject to the one recommendation that we notify Little League formally of the timing and the schedule, Meth for the record, if you need it.
Do I have a second?
I second that.
Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Didich?
Yes.
DePiero?
Yes.
Mealy?
Yes.
Math?
Yes.
Napolitano?
Yes.
Veely?
Yes.
Von Aiken?
Yes.
Dinsmore?
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck. I walk under there, I'll be enjoying watching you work. All right. Moving on to our next item on our agenda, it's application number 21:524, Enton Road LLC, Nine Enton Road, preliminary and final major site plan for construction of solar carports.
Mr. Chairman, my name is Bob Smith. I'm a licensed attorney in the state of New Jersey, and I'm here tonight representing Nine Enton Road LLC. And as you accurately described it, we're here to put solar panels on a portion of our parking lot and use the benefits of solar electricity at our facility. The site in question is 13.15 acres. It's in the SED-5 zoning, and it already has an office structure on the facility. I don't think I have to talk to the board about the benefits of solar. World's getting a little too hot. Solar energy is one of the ways that we can hopefully reduce our need for fossil fuels, and the state of New Jersey has by law declared solar uses as inherently beneficial uses because of the benefits to society as a whole. My intention tonight, Mr. Chairman, to have only one witness, and what we are seeking, just for clarification, is a preliminary and final site plan. There are no variances requested, so it's...
All right. Before we get there, we have a bunch of waivers mentioned in the planner's memo of December 3rd, 2021. Mr. Weiser, would you?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I've been trying to bring this up on my computer. I can't see if you do that. So, thank you very much. This is, embarrassing is what it is, but in any event, this is the BFJ report dated December 3rd from Susan Favate, and I'm just going to go through the items that she has on the second half, page one, and the top half of page two. So the first is that, the item is the NJDEP Letter of Interpretation. There appears to be wetlands along the southern and western periphery of the property, but none of the improvements are proposed in those wetlands, so a waiver is recommended. There is a requirement that protective covenants and deed restrictions be submitted. The applicant is asked to confirm that no such resistance, no such restrictions, pardon me, exists, and that would be a testimony item. The project is exempt from the Highlands, so a waiver is recommended. Terms of natural features, the site is developed, and improvements are only proposed on the paved areas, so a waiver is recommended. Spot elevations requirement, there are no new buildings or changes to existing buildings, so a waiver is recommended. Floor plans, again, there are no changes to the buildings, so a waiver is recommended. Signs, sir, can you confirm that there are no signage proposed?
There are no signs proposed.
So a waiver is recommended. Thank you. Fences, walls, and sidewalks, again, no changes, so a waiver is recommended. Utilities, again, no changes, so a waiver is recommended. Top of the next page, pardon me, storm drainage, no changes, waiver recommended. I do note, however, that I think on the engineer's report, there was a request for a discussion on downspouts and how you're going to deal with water coming off of the proposed structures, so I would imagine you'll deal with that as part of testimony. Landscaping, no landscaping is proposed, so a waiver is recommended. Soil erosion and sediment control, no grade changes are proposed, waiver recommended. Solid waste, no waste receptacles are proposed, waiver recommended. Use of non-residential buildings, no changes to the principal uses are proposed, waiver is recommended. are proposed, waiver is recommended. Traffic study, no change to the traffic pattern is proposed, waiver is recommended. Environmental impact assessment. Again, we're on existing impervious, so, and it's not within the adjacent natural features, so waiver is recommended. Tree protection and tree removal, no tree removal is proposed, waiver is recommended. And conformance with preliminary approval and providing separate sheets for final approval, this is a combined application, so there is no separate preliminary and final approval, so waiver is recommended.
All right. Yes, Mr. Von Aiken?
Regarding the utility item here, considering that these are solar panels, my understanding is approvals are needed from the utility company. Is that something that maybe should have been presented rather than be a waiver? Just... The question for...
I think it's probably more of an engineering...
Okay.
I, I don't see that. That's, that's between the utility company and the requirements for the solar panel. I don't think that's anything that would...
Okay, fair enough.
Jennifer?
Also, I noticed the accessory height variance is missing. Remember the last solar panel?
Yeah.
It, it's higher than 15 feet, so that's the one variance that just isn't in the report.
Okay. Well, I think we found that out...
Last time.
Last time, yes. So I'm assuming that that would be, your, your application is amended for, to have a request of variance for the conditional auxiliary...
Yeah, the top is 20 feet, give or take.
On the right.
Yeah, 21 feet.
Well, we'll get you sworn.
Yep. I'm, I'm assuming your application is amended to include that.
And also to magic languages in the notice with regard to any other...
Yes.
Variance and waivers which may be required. And quite frankly, it was not something we, you know, it's...
Okay.
Was identified, so we're requesting, and we'll justify it.
Do I hear a motion approving or granting the waivers as outlined, both in the discussion of the, in the memo of December 3, and any subsequent requirements?
Mr. Chairman, a motion to approve the waivers recommended by our planner, Mr. Weiser.
Do I hear a second?
Second, Von Aiken.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. I'm assuming you've also seen the proposed final resolution at this point.
Yes, and we're bringing new technology tonight to planning and zoning. The good-looking guy in the white shirt at the back of the room is an associate in my office, and he has a portable printer. And if the board decides, if you decide that you want to approve this resolution, that there may be a sentence you don't like, and you'd like it replaced with something else, he can do it on the spot. So, God willing, there's not many issues. We worked hard to put this resolution together, the reason being, being that building season's coming up, we're trying to get the solar in the ground as quickly as we can.
I'm, I'm assuming that you and our township planning counselor have worked together...
Many, yes.
Making sure that it meets what you're looking for, and then we will look at it and decide if that's what we're willing...
If it's acceptable to you.
To accept.
And if you want to make any changes, we can do it.
Wow. Cool.
So...
That's probably the reason I can't get on. He's blocking you.
Counselor, present, please present your case.
All right. We have, we're, we're going to be right to the point. We have one witness, and that witness is seated to my right. His name is Drake Stinson, and he's our engineer. I'd ask that he be sworn, so he can give testimony, and then we'll do his credentials, et cetera.
Mr. Stinson, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm a testimony about the give, it be the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Name and address for the record, please. Please spell your last.
Drake Christopher Stinson. My address is 223 Wilkie Road, Tannasville, Pennsylvania. I work for a new lines engineering and survey of 315 Monmouth Avenue, Lakewood, New Jersey.
Spell your last name.
S.T.I.N.S.O.N. Stinson.
Counselor, you can qualify the witness, please.
All right, if you would, Mr. Stinson, would you give the board a detailed summary of your credentials?
Right, thank you. I received a bachelor's in science in civil engineering in 1985 from New Jersey Institute of Technology. I became a New Jersey professional engineer in 1992. I have a professional license in New York and Pennsylvania. I'm a green council building lead professional. I'm a certified municipal engineer, and I've been designing site improvements in civil engineering for over 35 years. And I've also testified in front of numerous boards.
We offer you to him, Mr. Chairman, as a, to you, Mr. Chairman, as a, Pete, licensed P.E. in our state.
Any members have any questions? Hearing and seeing none?
So, if you would, Mr. Stinson, how about giving us a, a summary of what our proposal is to the board, and then we'll start going into some of, but what we did, I don't know whether you think it's a good idea or not, but what we did, you previously approved a solar carport at the very next property, at Seven Enton. So what we did, being the smart lawyers that we think we are, we went back and we read the transcript and watched the meeting. We saw all the questions that you asked, so we made a point of telling Mr. Stinson to be ready to answer those questions. So Mr. Stinson, first, give us the broad overview, and then let's talk about some of the individual features.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Didn't the resolution say that all the testimony was given by Mr. Lines?
I don't think so.
In the draft resolution?
But if it is...
Draft resolution? Oh, wait. I know there was revisions today that I didn't get a chance to...
No, no. The original was Mr. Stinson alone.
It was Mr. Stinson alone.
Correct, sir.
The record, our drawings are signed by Mr. Lines, who's the head of our firm.
Yeah.
We have several engineers that testify on the...
No, I just looked at the floor resolution first, and I thought it said Mr. Lines, because I thought it was the same as the sign of the plan.
Do we have a tripod here that would make it easy?
Yeah, I can, I brought my tripod. Is there a place where you love to see the...
Usually over there. Of course, the stenographer might not appreciate the location. You could, I suppose you could put it over there this time, and the people at this side of the, the board will be happier, because they always have the long distance to view, but we usually like to put it where our engineer can see it easily.
The drawings will be exactly the same as the drawings that were submitted in the board's package.
Yep.
Yeah, it's not here. Usually it's actually in the chairs.
Oh, yeah?
All right. All right. So, you really hear me all right?
Mm-hmm.
This is the plan that shows the existing conditions of the site, which is known as Nine Enton Road. It's block 202, lot 9. It contains 13.155 acres. It's an existing three-story triangle-shaped office building there, and I visited the site on January 27. In my opinion, the site is in very good condition. We also, we also visited the solar arrays that are next door that were installed, and they're looking good, too. So the proposed condition, the other side of this one, is we're supposed to put one solar array on this side.
You got, you should be using the microphone. I'm sorry. You're, I can't hear you.
Is this on?
It's on. You have to speak into it. It's wireless. You have to hold it close to your face.
There'll be one solar array to the east of the building, which will be on this side, and two, and three solar arrays on this side. We'll show you that here. This is the blow up of the position. I highlighted them in yellow, so we have one solar array on the, on that side, and three on this side. As you can see, Enton Road, Enton Road is on this side of the building, so in my opinion, the building itself so, screens the location of the arrays, so that it's not visible, is visible from Enton Road. I want to point that out. So I'll, I'll discuss the utilities and the engineering for the project, the electrical It's amazing that these solar arrays, I'm told, provide almost 100% of those electric needs.
Thank you.
Which is phenomenal. So the extra power supplied to the electric grid at times of surplus should closely balance the electric needs for the grid, and near zero energy growth. The system will be connected to the electric service, which your MDP in the center of the building, and there's announcements here, but of course, there'll be electric conduits between the, between the arrays. Electric conduits will be two and a half inch, they're 80 feet, and it definitely will be off to a good... Regarding the storm drainage, the panels themselves are set up with gaps between them, so that the water runs down between the gaps, and there's no, only adverse impacts. There's no, there's no change to the stormwater system, so the water that falls through the gaps in the arrays goes onto the ground, and it's, it's paid away just like it normally would if they weren't there. So there's no effect of the storm drainage. The project is not considered a major project in project NJDEP rules, because it doesn't disturb one of the clear areas previous. Regarding the lighting, the canopies themselves will have LED lights located underneath the canopies, but will make up for the blocking of the lights, and the new area lights on the site will be fine and sufficient. We redid the lighting plan to show the lighting levels in between. Here, so there's plenty of light with the LED lights that are installed. The new LED lights will be closer down, in my opinion, provide additional security in the front areas, and it's more environmentally friendly, because it's a lower-down, less higher-up light, in my opinion. We're asked to look at whether or not the soil conservation district permit would be required for soil erosion control plan certification, which requires a permit if it's greater than 5,000 square feet. I prepared a calculation based on the estimated trench lengths and the, the poles for the foundations, and came up with about 2,100 square feet, which is less than the 5,000, so we do not need a soil erosion control permit. We do receive some correspondence from some of the authorities having jurisdiction, all that to talk about. There were some few comments, and I can address those, those comments. The Precipiny Troy Hills Sewer Utility prepared a memorandum dated November 8, 2021. They had no comments. Two, we received correspondence from Precipiny Troy Hills Fire Association District 6, and there were a couple comments. One, where will the power shut-off be located? The power shut-off will be located where enters the building, right about there. We have another, there's another drawing that shows the electric. I'm not sure whether this was submitted with the package or not, but this shows the electric layout.
Well, in case you're not sure, let's mark it A1 at tonight's date.
Counselor, what are we going to call that?
A1.
What do you want titled the actual?
It's called the Array Layout. It's an engineering drawing, E3, and it has a date of 6/6/21. The names of the fire chief's comment, where will the shut-off be located? We'll have a shut-off located right in the building, right in the building. What will that A1 look like? We just said that there'll be a site posted that says solar array version. The fire chief said, what will the labeling look like? An identification placard will be posted indicating solar array emergency, emergency disconnect at the location of the building, what I showed, right there. There was another comment, during construction, keep dumpsters at least 15 feet away from the building at all times, and keep roads open for emergency access. We're going to add a note to that drawing, and, and say that specifically. And we will, we will follow up with the fire chief and make sure that he has this information, which will be labeled as a... The comments from the board, the planning board engineer, topographic boundary survey information should be referenced on the existing conditions plan sheet 2 of 5. We agree with this comment. We'll add the reference to the drawing. Number two, the applicant shall testify regarding the construction methods and should verify that less than one acre of disturbance is proposed. Limit of disturbance for foundations and anticipated locations for electric equipment and trenching. I described that already. The disturbance is less than an acre of total disturbance and less than a quarter acre impervious. The array post foundations would likely be drilled or augured for clean excavation. The trenches would be one backhoe bucket width, or maybe a ditch width. This cuts a narrow cut slot through, like a saw blade, into the, into the asphalt with little disturbance. Number three, a Morris County Soil Conservation District certification is required for land disturbance more than 5,000 square feet. The applicant should testify as to the amount of proposed land disturbance. As I previously testified, about 2,100 square feet of disturbance, which is less than the 5,000. The disturbance will be very minimal. The planning board planners' comments, there's just one comment. Regarding the completeness items, we're asked to testify whether there were any, you know, restrictive covenants for the property, and that was shown on the first...
When do it submit?
Correct. This is on the existing conditions plan. There are easements up in this corner. There's an access easement and a utility easement. You can see here, crosshatched on the drawing, but as you can see, that is not in any vicinity for where our solar arrays are, so there's no power supply with any constraints on the site.
So if you don't mind, let me stop you for a second. On the GPI report, December 20, you did handle the engineering comments in one, two, and three, but the second page, four and five. All right, so maybe we should take a look at those and address them. This is the GPI report dated December 20. And you did, yeah, you did the first three. Let me be helpful. Number four is the applicant should testify if they have shown the proposed improvements to the local fire department. If so, does the local fire department have any comments regarding the 14-foot canopy roof clearance height?
Thank you. Yes, well, number four, I can testify that we did reach out to the, the fire department as you requested, and these are 14 feet, plenty of room for their equipment.
Okay. And then, number five, the applicant should testify, if any modification is proposed to existing drainage patterns, the applicant should provide testimony regarding proposed canopy roof stormwater management measures, including gutters, leader, discharge locations in snowmelt, and also testify regarding the note on the plan that states slope to ground.
Correct. Well, as I mentioned before, there'll be no changes to the stormwater conveyance system on site. There'll be no increased runoff. At that end, so we'll ask for that question, what is slope to ground? Do you have a... At that end, so we'll ask part of that question, when it's slope to ground, we have a system indication that the arrays themselves are pitched and that it's going to slope, slope to the ground. So as I said before, the water drains through the slots between the panels.
And I think that's all four of the reports, correct?
Well, the other, um, the waiver items at the beginning, I testified as to the respective covenant. Was there anything else that you needed to?
On the BFJ planning report dated December 3rd, uh, you appeared to, to address all of the comments, but planner, planner is here. We missed anything.
Um, well, uh, there is the last comment on the BFJ report, which speaks to, pardon me, speaks to some apparent discrepancies that she, uh, found on the zoning chart. So we would ask that any, uh, plan revisions.
Be corrected.
Be corrected. And then the other, um, issue is what is the maximum height at the top end of the highest?
Correct. Yes. That's shown on the, the section that shows the arrays themselves as I mentioned. There's two different types, seven print, seven high tape frame section and the six high T frame section. And they have different heights. The highest one would be 22 foot, three inches.
Total height from grade.
Correct. 22 foot, three inches.
And Jennifer, I'm not able to pull up the ordinance here. Do you know what the height is in the SEV5?
And well, in the SEV5, it doesn't have a section for accessory. Accessory heights is in section 430.
13B1.
13B1. And I have that on.
Apologies.
I would like to add to the record, um, the last comment from the, from the planner regarding that zoning, zoning information that you, um, pointed out. We've identified that there's only the one waiver required for the accessory structure height. All the other, um, components of the project are fully compliant.
Waiver or variance?
Variance.
Variance. So, and in terms of that, the, if the board was looking to the balancing test, the big plus here for the municipality as well as the applicant is more solar. You know, you, every time you rely on another kilowatt hour of solar, that's one less you need in your, out of your grid. Hopefully less oil that's burned or natural gas that's burned. So it's a balancing, correct? And you believe that the solar provision provides the balance that's necessary?
It's amazing that this ought to be able to supply all electricity for the building. I find it phenomenal. There's so many beneficial uses. It reduces the carbon footprint, reduces energy costs. It'll be beneficial to both the applicant and the town.
Actually, I'd like a comment on how while the solar part does do a balancing thing, it actually doesn't speak to why it's as high as that.
So why, why that high? Why, why do you need the 22 feet for the solar panel?
Um, that's designed in order to, to collect the right, um, you know, the, the sun, the angle, the sun, the angle. The height of the, the actual height was based on the minimum height clearance from the bottom, which was the 14 feet that we set in order to fit.
The fire.
Emergency vehicles. And then the, um, the razor just slightly tilted to catch the proper angle of the sun.
So it improves the efficiency of the solar panels on the structure.
Okay. So Mr. Chairman, uh, the maximum height, and thank you, Jennifer, of the maximum height under 430 dash 13, um, actually B1 is 15 feet. And applicant is proposing 22 foot, three inches. Um, and I think they have given you the reasons why. So, uh, under the, do we see, under the SICA balancing test, do we see any negatives for having, uh, the height at that level?
No, it's the height that's proper for the, for the design.
And also too, one of the direct measurements that any board has negative is whether or not you have a room full of unhappy people, you know, all of whom were notified within 200 feet. And I think everybody has a smile on their face in this room, but when you open it to the public, you'll find that out. Also too, you, you, your board has made a conscious decision within the last two months that you want to see more solar panels in Precipine Troy Hills by approving the car, solar on the adjacent property.
Okay. I don't see, uh, Mr. Chairman, any negatives here. I think the applicant has spoken to, uh, the proper justifications. So I think should you choose to act on this variance, I think you have enough information.
That's what I was looking for. Are there any members of the board that have questions of this witness on this testimony at this time? Mr. Canziano, you have any?
Yeah, I have just a couple of follow-up housekeeping items. You did mention that you are below the 5,000 square feet. That's, and you mentioned it, you ran a calculation. Just as a condition of approval, I ask that that gets submitted, uh, that calculation. You also mentioned you go to revise the plan to put the proper, uh, survey references on there. But I also ask, under the lighting plan, you did show the isolux, uh, book handles under the canopy, uh, under the canopies in the arrays, but you're taking down, uh, the high mast lighting, uh, sight lighting.
That's not, that's not correct. We're not taking down the, I, I must say.
It's going, looks like it appears it's going, it's.
No, the, the mast lighting stays there.
Okay. Could you explain that?
It's supplemented by the, uh, the lights underneath. Any, any area that's blocked by the solar arrays will be lit by the LED light, the canopy lights that are underneath the solar array.
Could you explain how you're not interfering with the, the light poles? It's like the, the, the most southern row of, uh, array appears to be right over the, the lighting.
They're, um, they're between the arrays.
Play that again?
They're between the arrays. The lights stay there.
I think on your plan, the light poles are shown under the array. Could you just testify to that where, where, can you show me where the light poles are? Looks like if they're in the, the, the second row of parking and. In the first full row.
No, I see that.
And you have a, you have a canopy in that same line. And the same with the nearest, uh, row, like, uh, array relative to the building.
It would be my preference to try and keep the lights in between the panel arrays. We can clarify that because, yeah, as I said, I'm not quite sure. What I can tell you is that the lights, whether they stay or they're not there, the lighting will be lit by the.
Well, this is what I'll ask. You can look at that if you're going to take the light, I just, it's subject to the board. But I would ask that you have a revised lighting plan to show what the end result, foot candles are and isolate is from the face of the building to, to address lighting along the sidewalk of the building. And again, to the, to the, to the steadily pork, uh, steadily row of the parking. So that we have.
Do you want us to model the existing light poles as well?
Well, if you're keeping the existing light poles, yes. And if you're not, then the new lighting will have to cover that.
And I can agree with that because I wanted to see the light levels in between the aisles, which were missing. For some reason it was trimmed off underneath the lighting plant.
Yeah, it's trimmed off right under the.
We'll update the lighting plan to show a final design for the lighting in accordance with the existing.
Yeah, that's my request.
So you agree to work with a township professional to come up with an approvable lighting plan that you and he both agree on?
Yes, I see. I could look into that already.
And then you mentioned, in kind of unusual, I have a draft of a resolution and it states number nine, uh, that you testified that the site is in good condition. I did drive the site and I did note some potholes and in various locations. And we kind of had the same testimony with the prior application that I mentioned. What is the applicant and or building owner going to do about, um, upgrading, any upgrades to this parking lot, making sure that these, the pavement is in good state of repair? And again, I, I personally am not concerned about it from a, well, I'm more concerned about it from a constructibility standpoint and the, the solar arrays going in and you're giving yourself a difficult time to get paving equipment after you put the solar, solar arrays in. So have you given any thought to spot repairs to the parking lot?
Well, after the, um, the electrical conduits are installed, obviously they, they have to repair the asphalt. So I don't think there was a plan to really pave the whole parking lot and just, you know, isolated trench repair for the areas that were damaged. I didn't notice any, um, pavement areas that, that need to be repaired, but if there are some, I'm sure the applicant would agree to while repairing, um, pavement spots that need to be repaired.
That's, that's good. That works for, for my instinct. I don't know what the board's position is.
If you can identify the locations or we can look again.
Well, I think maybe we leave it toward post, to inspection or post-construction.
Very well.
So, so what I would suggest is to take your comment, I'll put it in the resolution as well, that the applicants agreed to spot repairs to the parking lot in satisfaction of the town engineer.
Yeah. Yes. I, that, that works for me.
All right. Gordon, you have some?
Yeah, just one quick question. I, I guess it's already been pointed out by our planner and I'd see that in the resolution number, whatever, one of the, one of the ones towards the end, that the zoning table was incorrect. Do you know if there's any existing variances for setbacks or impervious coverage of the site?
That's what I tried to get on the record before when we brought up the issue about the, the variance for the accessory building structure height. I, I testified that, um, that was the only variance or waiver that was required and the other respects of the project are all conforming.
I, I get, I would guess I was getting at pre-existing variances. There's none?
No.
Okay. Cause I guess the zoning table kind of.
So you went back and, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. So you went back, you, you checked again, regardless of what the zoning table said and you're comfortable that.
Correct.
That is the only one variance that's required.
The building is way far back with the old setback requirements. All the bulk requirements for the building are, are met. And we're going to update the table on the revised document.
Thank you.
Right. Any other members of the board have any questions? Jennifer, you look like you have something.
I do. I, I, I am just, I'm, work for the township. I'm the representative from the town and I run the construction and zoning department. So can I just ask, I'm curious, I've been with the town 30 years. This is the first time we're ever doing a resolution. What was the reason for trying to do the resolution now? Because I was just talking, you still have to meet compliance review. So you're still going to revise the plans and have to resubmit and still, uh, Andrew and Stuart are going to have to look at them and Nor is still going to have to process and sign. But what was the reason for, for wanting to expedite the resolution?
Because we're getting started much later than we wanted to. We want to get the solar up as quickly as we can. And, uh, as you know, you immediately lose a month by the, by separating the resolution from, from the application. And, and of course, uh, the other reason for trying to expedite it is you never know. I mean, for the moment, pandemic is, seems to be going away, but you never know. All right? You may be in a war, God forbid, in the next month. You never know. So if you, if you're trying to move your project ahead, trying to save that month is a, is a good thing. Plus, at the end of the day, it's solar panels. You know, up until this discussion of the accessory height variance, it was a, uh, pretty much by right application. All right? I mean, it's, it was a pretty clean application. So that being said, you, you know, you, we called early and said, is it possible that we could help in terms of expediting this by working with the, the board attorney?
Would you speak up, please?
To work with the board attorney to, uh, try to draft a resolution that hopefully would be good enough for passage the same night. So we could save the, the, the month. It's about, it's about time. And the fact that you never know.
As zoning officer, I obviously can't issue the zoning permit until I have the signed site plan and done by the compliance review. But, uh, the DCA in the state of New Jersey allows construction departments to start simultaneous plan review. So that is always something that we can discuss with applicants to. You can submit to the construction department, um, which is the thing that's going to take you the time. The zoning permit, I've already written, if, if this application is approved, I've already written my notes, the zoning permit's issued in like 24 to 48 hours. It's the construction department that takes time, but there's always that option for compliance, you know? While, while you're seeking compliance review, if your application is approved, you can have already submitted to the construction department.
Right.
And, and agree that if for, for some reason that you decide not to do the project, you can still pay for the plan review. But that is, that is an option for all applicants. You could submit that if time is of the essence and that's an issue.
And what we're hoping to do is, as far as I read this, it looks to me like there's, there may be two comments that go into the resolution. Which new planning and zoning technology we can do in satisfaction, you know, as long as your, your board attorney is satisfied, we can give you a nice, clean resolution tonight. That includes the fact that the revised lighting plan will be submitted to the satisfaction of the town engineer and that spot repairs to the parking lot, again, to the satisfaction of the town engineer. And those, and also.
Submission of the calculations of disturbance. Yes.
All right. Submission of calculations of disturbance. And then the, the accessory height.
And then the revised zoning schedule is part of the revised plan.
And if you like this, if you like the application, give us 10 minutes and we'll give you a lovely reservation.
All right. Right. Any other members of the board have questions?
Mr. Chairman, I ask, why, uh, are we, are we going to be setting a precedent by looking at a resolution immediately after the approval of the application? This could go on infinitum into the future, could it not? A question for our attorney.
Yes. So I, I had sent an email, um, prior to when council originally made this request. The municipal land use law allows a board to do this under certain circumstances. What's traditional is, um, the board authorizes the attorney to prepare a resolution that will be voted on at a later time. This in no way sets a precedent because each applicant has to make a request and this board has to grant that request. So if it's, how many years have, you know, been on the board and this never happened before, that kind of shows you.
In my time, I have had it happen before, but.
It's very rare. Very rare. So it's really dependent on the circumstances of what the applicant is requesting. It can be done. There's nothing wrong with doing it. It's just a matter of can you gather the factual data that's being presented and put it into a memorializing resolution beforehand? 99% of the time, you can't do it just because there's too much going on, there's too much testimony to be had. In this one, we were able to, um, it's only one witness, engineering testimony. I was able to get a, a synopsis of that testimony ahead of time and put it into our form and we're able to do it. I have a couple of additional notes. Council basically touched on, uh, the conditions that will be added. So on this one, the board found that it was okay, uh, based on the circumstances, but in no way do I believe that this sets a precedent for future applications.
I propose that what we do tonight is that if we agree with the application, that we would then approve the application, then the final, uh, resolution would be approved after a 10-minute or 15-minute break. So that there would be a chance for it to be updated and for us to have the changes explained to us by our attorney.
Sounds good.
Does that seem fair?
Yes.
Can I, can I ask a question? I apologize, but, um, is the resolution going to include the motions, a second, the votes? Cause I usually add that information in, you know, after, you know, we, it's been approved.
I don't see why not.
Is he going to do it? I mean, is there any reason why if he's fixing it up, it can't be sent to me? And tomorrow I could add all this extra information? Or is this gentleman going to edit himself?
Council, really, if the board approves the form resolution, it just has to be signed by the chairman and the board secretary in terms of, you know, the final form. But.
Absolutely.
If, if the form resolution itself is approved upon, I mean, or really what you're asking for is that, those, that last page where it's the, where the.
Where I'm adding everyone's vote. Who voted for it?
Okay.
Motion, who seconded it? Who voted yes, who voted no, who's not here?
Right.
I mean, technically it could be added in those 15 minutes. They have the ability to type here.
To Nora's satisfaction, we have to add it. To Nora's satisfaction, we have to add it.
No.
Up to you. I'm just asking a question. I usually take, you know, what is signed off on and make copies for, you know, all the township departments, do a cover letter, and I'm not doing all that tonight. But if you want to sign off on it, I mean, I don't see why we can't, you know, take care of this last little bit, you know, tomorrow, and I send it to them. There's no reason.
Couldn't we just, couldn't Nora just add the rest of that tomorrow?
I don't see anything wrong with that.
Yeah. Counsel, in terms of completing the form, a cover letter and copies, that's...
Not a problem, but we do have the technology to actually add that page if you'd like, you know, and all you're filling in is who made the motion, who seconded it, and then the board secretary checking, yes or no.
The question that I would ask of our counselor is, are you, is it being suggested here that instead of we're handing you a completed resolution tonight, you get one tomorrow morning?
We could handle it. It's a huge lift. We could handle it.
Does that work for you, Nora?
I'd prefer it that way.
That makes sense.
So again, from the counsel's perspective, the resolution has to embody the facts as established in the record and reasoning for the approval or denial. All the other formats, if you will, can come at a later time, really at that point that the chairman can sign off on it, as long as this board is voting on that form establishing the facts and the criteria for which, you know, makes their decision.
Right.
That's the essence of...
So I'm not sure, is the plan to verbally say the additional conditions to the resolution that's before you and then modify it for tomorrow? Would you like it modified tonight?
I would personally like it modified tonight so that we could vote on the resolution tonight.
I agree, because some of the testimony in terms of the actual variance being requested, that really should be in the form resolution.
Yes.
And then in terms of the format to satisfy Nora can be done tomorrow.
Right.
Perfect.
And by the way, for the record, are there any trees being cut down?
No.
Okay. That was my question. Sorry, I didn't mean to steal it from you.
Okay. Are there any other members of the public? Mr. DeDeeche?
Yeah, I have a quick question. The height of the panels, like, how did we come up with 22 feet?
As I explained before, the bottom core of the array was set based on the requirements of...
Right, but why not 24? Why not 21? How did we come up?
The angle is based on the engineering for the solar array.
Right. So I thought about that. I heard the previous testimony as well. See, what I was thinking, the angle of the sun is not the same throughout the year, right? So how do we know this 22 feet would work for the whole year at the same efficiency?
That was designed by the solar array manufacturer, so, you know, if you want, we have the engineer here who can answer questions. It's not saying it's not that important, I'm just saying that it's based on the design of the solar array.
To maximize the collection of solar.
Right, but the sun doesn't stay the same angle for the whole year. I'm just curious, right? Maybe it's my curiosity then, anything else, yeah?
Oh, no, it doesn't adjust, if that's what you mean.
It doesn't adjust, right? So then how would it be efficient for the whole year?
As I said, I'm not the solar array engineer, the site engineer for the site plan application, but I would suspect that it's based on the engineering for the solar array, the angle of the sun, takes into account the different angle of the sun during the different times of the year.
Okay.
Maximizes the...
So I would think they ran some sort of models or some sort of calculations to figure out the most optimized angle probably than the perfect one. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Other members, professionals, hearing and seeing, no other questions?
Mr. Chairman? I have a question.
Oh, listen.
I would have appreciated a picture of the parking lot that's there now. I understand you say you're going to fix anything, and we appreciate that. Thank you for that. But visuals always help. Did anyone ask or mention, will there be any EV chargers placed inside of, underneath these arrays?
No, they're, they obtain the power, they don't, they send it out, it goes to the main distribution panel inside the building.
Yeah, I know. I didn't see any EV charging spots in the actual lot. Is there any now?
No.
So we're going to add a bunch of solar arrays, but not a single EV charging spot?
Not that I know of.
Well, you're redoing the whole parking lot anyway, aren't you, pretty much?
Oh, we're not redoing the parking lot.
Well, you're doing four, I mean, four sections of it, so...
We're installing the arrays above the parking lot.
Okay. But for the record, there's no EV chargers on this site?
Not at this time.
And you're not installing any?
Not at all.
As part of this project? Okay.
How do you, within that, how do you get around the DCA's model ordinance, which applies to towns even if they haven't adopted it on their own?
Right. I think the difference is that we're not doing it on their own.
Well, you've got a preliminary and final major site plan.
Do you recall? I didn't think the ordinance said they had to. I think it addresses, should they want to, what they have to do.
I was under the impression that it was mandatory, and then there were certain elements that township, a township could waive at certain, or could modify at certain, they could not.
So I think the distinction is that the mandated charging stations are proportional to new parking spaces. In other words, if you do 15 parking spaces, somebody in them have to have a charging station. If you do 100, somebody has to have a charging station. Because there's no new parking spaces, I think that's why it doesn't apply.
It sounds plausible.
So I'm assuming that we grant you this, that if there is a further requirement, that you have charging stations?
Right.
That would then be something that would be brought forward and you would go forward with that. If it's not required, then it's not required.
Yeah, I think the cutting issue is new spaces.
Okay.
You could do a condition of approval of you'd be required to comply with the state statute regarding if a charging station...
If necessary.
As applicable.
Right. Exactly. Exactly. Okay. Are there any members of the public?
I still have a couple more.
Oh, no.
Okay. They're not difficult. I think Mr. DePiero asked before, but any trees going to be removed from the south side or trimmed?
No trees were to be removed.
Okay, so it's high enough that none of those trees have to go away or be removed?
Right.
Okay. And will anyone from the Jacksonville Road area be affected in any way?
Can you explain why?
So I'm going to assume that you're going to do some construction in the area and lose those parking spots for those days you're doing construction. Will there be any traffic on the Jacksonville Drive area?
There shouldn't be any disruption. I mean, it's a huge parking lot.
Okay.
I don't see that there'd be too much.
So when the one section's being worked on, there's still plenty of parking?
Sure.
Okay. All right, thank you. I don't have any more.
Okay. Are there any members of the public who have questions on this witness of this testimony at this time? No one's coming forward? Hearing and seeing none? Counselor?
Mr. Chairman, life is short, and we really have to get our solar act together as a country and as a state. We're trying to do it as quickly as we can, but we don't want to do it in any other way but top quality. And what you said at the last meeting, obviously, I was not smart enough to think that you would come up with new stuff, but the number of items that you have asked for, which are very reasonable, we are happy to add to the resolution, and we have to take them back to your town that you mentioned here to make sure that he or she is happy, namely that the, that there will be repairs to the parking lot as, to the satisfaction of the town engineer, the charging stations if needed by the law, all right? A reference to the height variance for the accessory structure for 22 feet 3 inches versus 15 feet in the ordinance, and I don't know if I said, did I, were there some others?
I had, we have to mark A1 and 2 into the record, which is the array layout compatible with the testimony regarding the fire association memorandum, the justification for the height variance, as you indicated.
Right.
In addition to creating a section calling out that particular variance in the whereas paragraph.
Right.
And then the rest are conditions of approval. Revised lighting plan showing lighting along the sidewalk and the south side of the row of the parking. Spot repair of the asphalt at the direction of the town engineer.
Right.
Submission of revised zoning chart, and then the EV charging stations.
If required.
If required. Those are the additional 1, 2, 3, 4 conditions that I have, in addition to the fact testimony regarding the, those two items that I just mentioned.
We think we can accomplish that rather quickly.
Okay.
And it will help us to get the jumpstart on the construction.
Is that your sum of your case?
Well, I don't know how much you want to take at this point, but, you know, the overall summary is that Parsonny Troy Hills is being a trend center. You know, you have already started approving more solar in your community, you're reducing the community's reliance on the grid. That's a great thing to do. You've had an extensive review by all four of the reviewing bodies, and to their comments we responded. Some of the new ideas tonight are great ideas, and we're happy to agree to them. So we're hoping that you'll be kind enough to grant us preliminary and final, and that bulk variance, the newly discovered bulk variance.
Okay.
It's a good deal for Parsonny Troy Hills.
Are there any members of the public that wish to speak in favor or in opposition to this at this time? Hearing and seeing none. All right, we have a two-step issue. So this closes the evidentiary portion of the case. It's a two-step process. The first thing we're going to do is we're going to have a vote, move a resolution to approve the application or to disapprove the application. Then our attorney will go off and get the resolution that he has proposed adjusted by the applicant's quick keyboardist back there, and then that will come back to us, and we can then approve the resolution or disapprove the resolution as sees, as we see fit. But Nora will have till tomorrow to make adjustments for any of the little bits that go on as to who voted for it, who voted against it, and have these signups. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yes.
Yes. Any discussion on this at this time? Do I hear a motion to approve the application?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Neely?
A motion to approve the application number 21:524, Enton Road LLC, 9 Enton Road, Lot 202, Lot Number 9, preliminary and final major site plan for construction of solar carports.
Are there any other items that we need to put in?
Um, no.
So we're approving the C variance for the, that includes a C variance, I suppose, preliminary and major final site plan approval, and the other conditions that we discussed. Is there anything else that I'm missing here?
Preliminary, major, final, with associated bulk.
Yep.
Subject to conditions stated on the record.
Right.
No, that's all.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
I second that.
Oh, sorry. You can have a deal.
I second that each.
Nora, would you call the roll, please?
DeDeeche?
Yes.
DePiero?
Yes.
Neely?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Napolitano?
Yes.
Neely?
Yes.
Vaughn Aiken?
Yes.
Stinson.
Yes. All right.
We can have your attorney for 10 minutes.
I like to move that we recess, what's the proper term here? I've forgotten. Recess for 10 minutes while they, our attorney goes and has the final resolution ironed out. This is reconvening of the meeting of the Township of Parsonny Troy Hills Planning Board Monday, March 7th. It's now about 9:10 or so. Nora, would you call the roll, please?
DeDeeche?
Here.
DePiero?
Here.
Neely?
Here.
Matt? Present.
Here.
Neely?
Here.
Vaughn Aiken? Here.
Here. Counselor, have you come up with an acceptable resolution that you could describe for us or...
Summarize.
Yes, of course. So the board heard testimony this evening from the applicant, 9 Enton LLC, regarding the solar array. They presented a testimony to Mr. Stinson, who provided testimony regarding the installation of the solar array, its site layout, emergency vehicle access, stormwater management and the like. There were also several conditions of approval. This board approved the application based on the general welfare, providing solar, which is consistent with the town master plan. The board found no substantial detriment to the public good, and that the solar arrays will not affect anything with regard to parking site circulation, stormwater management, or vehicular access. The conditions added were the lighting plan that was recommended by the township engineer, the spot repairs to the parking lot, the modification of the zoning table, and the EV charging station, if applicable. We'll work with council to confirm whether or not the EV charging stations are required on site and what that ultimate requirement will be. The resolution also has a condition that any de minimis field changes can be made by the township engineer. So if there are requirements for EV charging stations, then the applicant will work with the township engineer to have those EV charging stations installed at proper locations according to the state statute. The applicant will also provide the construction dumpster not to be within 15 feet of the building. That was in line with the township professional correspondence as well. That is it in sum, Mr. Chairman. And everything else, this board, the statement of the facts as presented this evening is encapsulated within this resolution, and the board's conclusions was essentially that the proposed solar array does promote the general welfare, and the height variance is justified because it provides the adequate angle to the sun to maximize efficiency while maintaining adequate site circulation for emergency vehicles.
Are there any questions by members of the board, of our attorney?
I just had one.
Andrew?
You may have said it, but I just missed it. Who's going to review if the state ordinance is applicable?
I am.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll issue a correspondence either way. I think council probably best will communicate in a writing that the board will be copied on, board secretary, board chairman, they can see if they're, what the ultimate conclusion is, and if there is in fact a requirement, then we'll leave that to the town engineer to do that there in the site plan portion.
Okay. Is that a fair summarization?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any questions at this time? Do I hear a motion approving the resolution? Anybody wish to approve this resolution at this time?
I would motion to approve the resolution.
Do I hear a second?
Second, Matt.
Nora, would you call the roll, please?
DeDeeche?
Yes.
DePiero?
Yes.
Neely?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Napolitano?
Yes.
Neely?
Yes.
Vaughn Aiken?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.